Good morning and welcome to the August, excuse me, October 16th, 2007 special meeting of the Glendale City Council. We're going to be reviewing the capital improvement program budget. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Eusefian.
Mayor Nigarian.
Here. Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good morning. I think it was three or four weeks ago that you last met in study session in your continuing effort to set priorities for the capital improvement program for the upcoming fiscal year and subsequent fiscal years. As a reminder, we plan capital improvements over a 10-year period of time. Many projects take multiple years, both to fund as well as to execute, and the process that you've engaged in is one of working on establishing priorities for the allocation of resources, and I probably don't need to remind everybody, limited resources for the implementation of various projects. I thought the last study session that you had was a very productive one. There were expressions of individual and collective thoughts on priorities for projects. At the end of that, you asked that we take those thoughts and our own, our own staff's own reflection on priorities and put together a discussion plan, and that's what you had before you this morning. I want to emphasize the word "discussion." This plan, first off, isn't balanced. In other words, there's, there's more on this plan than at least as of your last review there are resources to fund. Its purpose is to initiate discussion, get more thoughts from you on sort of the way in which we have allocated funds and set priorities so that we can further refine your direction to us. I should note, we passed out this morning a revised CIP discussion plan, the one with the yellow bars on it. It changes from the one you received last week in just a couple of different ways. We've broken out the individual cost items for Montrose Branch Library, Fire Station 29, and Rock Haven. We've split those out from the total. In one respect, and I think it's the Montrose Library and the Rock Haven rehab design, construction components have been moved up a year. In the, the version you saw last week, they were pushed back a year. That was just an error. They should have been forward a year. In addition, at the end of the table, you have the total of the allocated resources in each of the years, and in the table you had last week, there was just a running total of the ending financial position of the fund, almost all red numbers because based on the last allocation of resources, which again needs to be updated, there isn't enough resources to meet all of the projects as planned. So you've got a running deficit in each of those years. We've included a second total, and I think that's the table on the top. You see there at the end of the very last page, there's two little tables with mostly red numbers in them. The lowest table is reflective of the total expenditures, less total resources in CIP as of your last study session, but excluding the use of the yet-to-be-programmed and contingency money. You might recall, in the original CIP, we kept a contingency that worked like an expense line, but it was actually a contingency of money that wasn't allocated, but as you looked at the total balances in the CIP, it worked like an expense. We've taken the total amount of cost and the negative balance and have assumed that you used that yet-to-be-programmed contingency number. So it works to reduce the level of the deficit, makes it more positive, still in the red, but a smaller deficit than earlier projected. As I noted in the report to you last week, I think what's important is not necessarily to focus on the deficit level or the amount of resources, although you need to keep that in your mind at all times, but really to focus on the priority, the nature of the projects, the size, the timing of the projects. And I'd encourage you to, without having a spending free-for-all, because as you'll note, we are in deficit position, but we've yet to take into consideration the commitment of tax increment for parks and libraries, which you have yet to set, but we anticipate you'll allocate some resources in that regard. That hasn't been taken into consideration. We as yet do not have an updated GRA bond number. We're still working on about $30 million. That number could go up, so there could be more resources. And we really haven't begun to push around how you might fund various projects in different ways. So the resources side of the picture has really yet to be settled. We'd like to get through the discussion program a better sense of your priority for the various projects, and for that reason, a number of these projects in here, frankly, we have just put in for the purpose of initiating discussion to see if that's where you'd assign the priorities.
Mr. Weaver.
Jim, have you prioritized within the departments as opposed to prioritizing across the board? That's what it looks like you did. So under Montrose Library, Fire Station, and Rock Haven, you prioritized what you think the order is, and then you go down to public safety. I mean, it's by department.
This isn't, this isn't, this isn't necessarily a prioritization. In other words, the first project doesn't mean it's the highest priority. We've done two things here. We, we listened to what you all had to say during the last study sessions, and we tried to be reflective of where we think there is a consensus on the council.
And with those higher up within the departments.
They're not necessarily higher up. We've just tried to reflect that consensus here. And then on a number of the projects for which there really wasn't very much discussion, let's just take street improvements as an example, we've tried to arrive at what we think would be a level that we'd like to be able to accomplish. Now, at the end of the day, when we start pushing resources around, we just might not be able to get there, in which case some of these projects may need to be reduced. But we've tried to focus on a level that we'd like to try to accomplish, even though there wasn't much discussion on some of these during the city council meeting. I'm thinking of the replacement for radio system, the IS replacement, the street improvements. Your focus was really on more of the visible projects, Rock Haven, Fire Station, Library, Dog Park, development of future park projects, that sort of thing. And we've tried to glean where we saw a consensus, or at least a majority on the council, and reflect that here. The other projects, we've just given it our best shot at what we'd like to try and accomplish.
Okay, then put another way, have you then put resources, projected resources into those where you heard the most discussion and took, taken the other one and put into out years?
Yeah, we really haven't, we really haven't done this in a sense of a pot of resources that we've then allocated.
Well, no, no, but you're putting monies up front on ones we've talked about and show more interest in. If I look on your 10-year spread, ones we haven't talked about much, would the dollars be shown in the later years?
Well, the most difficult years are the earlier years. Let's take Dog Park Construction as an example.
Yeah.
Small little item, but it struck us because of the interest that the council probably wouldn't want to see that out in year eight of the 10-year plan. They'd probably want to see it earlier as opposed to later. Some of these projects, like street improvements, they span all 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we, in going through this, we've been mindful of the resources, but it hasn't, it hasn't been a process where we've taken a pot of money and allocated it. That's why you see every, almost every year is underwater here, because we have more work to do. But we have tried to be mindful of where we've anticipated the council would want to have these projects placed in the timing process, and things like Rock Haven, Fire Station, Library, obviously, that's not something that can wait until year seven, eight, and nine. It has to happen sooner. As a result, some of the other projects, like street improvements, are lighter in the earlier years and heavier in the later years where we had a little more flexibility.
And where Dog Park, for instance, isn't near as expensive as millions of dollar street improvements, you've shifted it up.
It's easier, that's right.
Is it?
That's right.
Okay, that's about what I was asking.
Yeah.
And of course, I gave you a, a first cut, my priorities, just a heck of it.
Mm-hmm.
Just to my colleagues. No, I listed down every item, and I pro-rated them one through five, and said, okay, here's what I see are the high ones, just myself. Because I'm trying to get, square in my head where we're, where we're heading as a, as a group. Okay, I got my question answered.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I suggest we do is just begin to go down the list, and, and we can have each department reflect again on the need on some of the projects, or I and other staff can give you some sense of how it is we plugged in the numbers that we did and the year in which we plugged them in. First example would be the combined project of Montrose Library, Fire Station 29, and Rock Haven, and we have anticipated their involvement in a, what I call a partial purchase or involvement of, purchase of the site, but with a private component that would lessen the financial impact on our CIP with a private component, again, not knowing what that might be. But it's reflective of a participation at a level that would have rehabilitation, purchase, or at least contribution to purchase of the entire site, and rehabilitation of a good portion of the site. That's reflected under the Rock Haven property purchase. We've anticipated in '07, '08, a considerable amount of earnest money with closure in '08, '09, design in '08, '09, and eventual rehabilitation and construction in, beginning in year 2010, '11. Again, we wrestled a lot with where does construction come after design? That's likely that the design, depending on numbers of community meetings and the likes, and the EIR process, could take you into '09, '10. Any number of these, these figures could be adjusted one year forward or one year back, but that was our thinking. The same with the Montrose Branch Library. We're anticipating design for the library because it needs to flow with the rehabilitation of the Montrose site, design occurring in '08, '09, and then eventual construction in '10, '11, '11, '12. And you'll see that's consistent with the investment of funds in the rehabilitation of the Rock Haven site. And then Fire Station 29 really flows after all of that, because it would be after you have a new library and after the library's been relocated, then you take on the construction of the Fire Station site and expansion, but design would come about 18 months to two years earlier than that in 2010, '11.
Mr. Starbird, let me ask you a question on those three, the Montrose Branch Library, the Fire Station, and the Rock Haven purchase. Are those, are those three items an inseparable package deal, in your, in your opinion?
The which ones?
The first three, the, the library, the fire station, and the Rock Haven purchase.
The library wouldn't be, I mean, the fire station would be, in theory, they could stay right in their own configuration if we didn't decide to put them into the old Montrose Library site if the library moved, right?
Right. The, the approach that we followed, and maybe it's a very large assumption, but based on what we heard in previous meetings from the council, was looking at reutilization of Rock Haven with incorporation of a new library, leaving Fire Station 29 where it is, but eventually expanding it over into the current library site, freeing up the Paradise Ford property for some form of economic development in support of the Montrose Business Park. That's what this is crafted around. Could you take a different approach? Certainly. We, we could be back to saying, Rock Haven stands alone, then we have to go find a site for a new fire station if we're going to replace it. Library could stay in place. As we looked at the numbers, if the expansion of the fire station in place could be done for about $5.5 million, which is what we have here, and if we could find a partner so that we're not carrying the full cost of Rock Haven, then the approach reflected here is probably a relatively good approach from a fiscal economic standpoint. But certainly, you could approach it in a number of different ways. We've made an assumption here, based on what we heard before, that there was a desire to have library, Rock Haven rehab, and our involvement there together, and to leave the fire station where it is and look at its expansion. We don't address in the CIP the eventual utilization of the Paradise Ford property, but likewise, you don't see any funds committed here for its further development. That's, that's sort of a separate project that would have to be evaluated later as we look at what the opportunities might be for the site.
Mr. Quintero.
Yeah, I'm interested in, in all three properties and the way you've laid it out, Mr. Starbird, and in fact, I do think that the commercial enterprise that we put into the former Ford site, I think that's going to absolutely help offset the cost of Rock Haven and, and the fire station redo. That's a very choice. I was there yesterday, as a matter of fact, very choice site, and a good-sized site, so...
In that regard, we have tried to be pretty conservative, so we've just left the implications of Paradise Ford out of this picture for a couple of reasons. One is, we want to be conservative about these numbers. Two is, that property was purchased with parking fund money that was committed to developing parking for Montrose. So we're anticipating that figure, I think it was about 1.7 or 1.8 million. If, let's say, the land was sold or leased, the parking fund should be repaid for its investment. So depending on how that project might develop, there could be public parking for which there might not be a repayment, but if, let's say, it were a straight-out land lease for a commercial development as an anchor, then we'd have to consider that land lease money going back into the parking fund, and it had been committed to Montrose Parking. So we've, we've tried to not anticipate those resources necessarily offsetting these costs for those reasons.
Mr. Draymond.
Mr. Starbird, you know, I have a question about the very thing you were just discussing, about where the funds came from for the purchase of the, of that site. And before coming to the council for some time, I, I attempted to get an answer to that question by calling the city, emailing the city, writing the city, and, and then, and never really getting an answer until I came here to council. And then I, I asked the question. I was told pretty specifically that that is not where the funds came from. And so I'm, I'm not doubting you at all. That's not, that's not where I'm, what I'm saying. I'm just back to being confused again as to where those funds came from. It's a minor, not a minor point, but I mean, it's a side point, but one that, that, based on what you're saying, we probably should get an answer.
We will. That's my recollection.
Yeah.
Steve?
Because my understanding was that there weren't anywhere near those kinds of funds in, monies in that fund.
The parking fund, the parking fund was the source of the money, right?
That's correct.
Whether all of that was related to Montrose's account within the parking fund, I'm uncertain.
The parking fund is looked at as a whole.
Right.
Parking fund is the parking fund. We split it for revenue generation and revenue, revenue tracking purposes between Montrose and Glendale, but the fund paid for the, for the acquisition of the site.
We had, as I recall, Steve, we had been walking down the road of allocating money to put a deck on top of the big parking lot. That is a direction we were in.
Well, a long, long time.
For a long, long time. That's a direction.
The big parking lot, you mean, was number three?
We were going to Deck Lot 7, if you remember.
Oh, 7.
This is 20, 20 years ago.
Yes.
That's, that's the story I heard when I got here nine years ago.
My predecessor, who had the same last name as me, was quite involved in that.
Yes, Draymond's father, actually, was involved in that.
And we had been doing some work, this is before, this is when Mr. Morford was still here, as I recall, Steve.
Correct.
We, Public Works had been doing some work on that very project when the, when we learned that the Paradise Ford property had been taken into escrow by a savings and loan. The thinking then was, well, rather than moving to, to decking that lot, wouldn't it be a better investment to have potentially surface parking at, at the west end of the Montrose Business Park where we seem to need it more than around the big lot? For that reason, we used parking fund money to buy the property.
We did. We made some, we made some revisions and upgrades to a number of the lots in there.
Right.
Some of them small, just reconfiguring, and then the idea was that the Paradise Ford lot would be the big increase in the parking inventory for the area. That's correct. So that's what based my assumption.
It may be, it may be that the answer I was given was simply that they assumed I was asking about the Montrose Parking Fund rather than...
Could be. And there really isn't a Montrose Parking Fund.
Could very well be.
It's just all one big fund.
Exactly, so. That may have been the, the reason for the...
Dave, your, Dave, your, your microphone. But in any case, none of these figures anticipate what might happen with the Paradise Ford property or the potential upside of, of the economics of that.
Mr. Draymond.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, it's a follow-up question. Since Mr. Eusefian is not here, I want to sort of follow up with a, a comment that he had made at our previous, or at some point in talking about the, the use of, the adaptive reuse of some of the buildings on the Rock Haven site themselves that could be rehabbed for commercial purposes such as, you know, concession, food concession, or other small retail as well. Not that that should be figured in either, because we don't know what that would be, but I just don't want to lose track of his suggestion.
No, we completely agree. And I might point out here, there's also the adaptive reuse for library purposes. For that reason, we have taken the lower end of the estimate on the cost of building a new library on the site. You might recall from some of your earlier tables, the Montrose Library cost was estimated between 11, $150,000 and upwards of 14 million, a little over 14 million. We've used the lower of the figures and, and then frankly, put a little more than we think would have normally been needed for rehab into the Rock Haven site. With design, it ends up being about $2 million for rehab because, which was really sort of the difference between the lower end of the Montrose Library and the upper end of the Montrose Library, anticipating that some of those buildings could even be used for library purposes in addition to private purposes, public purposes, what have you. So again, this is, this is not rocket science. There can be different views on how the numbers should be formulated, but that was our thinking as we put this together.
Here's, here's a question, and tell me where I should go. If, if I were to believe that there's some value in purchasing either all or part of the Rock Haven property, but to maintaining the Montrose Branch Library currently where it is with some upgrades, and moving the fire station across the street to some sort of mixed-use facility on the Star, on the Paradise Ford lot, I mean, where, where does that rationale fit into this package? It looks like we're being sold a package here, presented a package that is a rather, you know, there's a lot of assumptions in it. There's assumptions that, I mean, that we would be able to get Rock Haven, number one, enough to, to move the library, to expand the fire, and then to do something, you know, there's talks of a Trader Joe or something like that on the Paradise Ford lot. Those are all, you know, a series of assumptions. Are there any half-measures that we can take at this point? If I just want to commit some money to Rock Haven, am I, you know, where does that, where does that idea fit in, in the, the series of movings and library construction and fire renovation and all that?
That would take us back to the, the earlier table where we talked about all of the options on all of the projects. And you recall, we had scoped out at least every major variation on a theme for every one of the projects. We looked at leaving the fire station in place versus building it on, on the Paradise Ford lot versus building it someplace else. We had a number on Rock Haven that was everywhere from, don't be involved in it at all, to buy the whole thing, a variation on the library from build a whole new library to build this sort of a theme, which is utilization of existing buildings on Rock Haven, to just expand the library in place. So if you wanted to pick a different variation, we can do that, and we'll plug different numbers in here. It was our sense, coming away from the last study session, that this is where the consensus seemed to be going on Rock Haven. And frankly, from an economic standpoint, with the fire department indicating, it felt relatively assured that it could do an expansion of the existing fire station for $5.5 million on the existing site and get us well beyond 10 to 15 years in utilization. And with the interest in the Rock Haven site and the possibility of its use as library, we saw that as a pretty viable economic alternative. In addition to that, that's, I think we generally heard, that's where the council seemed to want to be moving to. If that's wrong, then, then tell us, and we'll put a different theme together.
Okay, well, I mean, the council may, as a whole, might want to move there, but my problem here is not the idea of doing all this. This all sounds great, but it's the price tag involved. And I have a problem with closing out the Montrose Library, which is a perfectly good library, and incurring $11 million in costs to rebuild a library. That $11, $11 million could go well towards completing an aquatics complex. So if my question is, to me, R and a giant, is it in my, is it, is it my preference to, to close out the existing library and rebuild a new one at the same cost that you could keep the library and build a aquatics complex? I'm not, I'm not ready to go with that, because I see it as a lot of duplicative efforts and duplicative funding.
Well, if that is the case, and we decide that 11 million's just too high a price tag, that doesn't preclude us from purchasing Rock Haven and turning it into a park, trying to rehab some of the buildings, and it still becomes a cultural center, and, you know what I mean? We just reuse that, that land, so...
I'm, I'm that far. I mean, I'm, we're, I think we're with each other to that step. It's the, it's the next step that I, I'm showing a little hesitation. Mr. Draymond.
You know, there's a, a little bit of a problem in the, in the argument that was just made, and that is that when, once you do that, the cost of the fire station doesn't remain at 5 million. It jumps up to almost triple that, or a little less than triple that. At least based on the previous numbers, we're at 14.5 million to build a new fire station. And unless that number has changed. I mean, that's the number I remember.
Oh, that's right.
And so the discussion I was having a few weeks back with our colleague, Mr. Eusefian, was about that point. It took off on a different tangent, but the point is, the, whether we spend it on the library, you know, 5 million plus on remodeling a library with the intention of expanding it on the current site, or, and building a $14.5 million fire station across the street, or purchasing a site at 11 something, down the street, putting the library there, rather, and spending 5.5 on the fire station, to me, the numbers remain the same in essence. Actually, it comes down a bit with this scenario, but they are relatively the same numbers. It's just where you're placing them. In other words, you don't get a fire station for 5.5 million if we build it elsewhere.
That's right. That, that's why if we're, unless you made a decision that, you know what, we're going to keep the fire station and library exactly as they are, we're not going to replace them in, in the timeframe of the next 10 years, then keeping the fire station in place, if that can be accomplished for 5.5 million, and the fire department believes it can be, and relocating the library tends to be a fairly viable economic choice, especially when, at least I hear almost everybody saying, a given is that we're going to be involved in Rock Haven. Now, you can unwind that, and you can, you can accomplish the various pieces in different ways, but I think unless you've concluded, we're not going to, in this timeframe, look at replacing library and fire station, I'm not sure the total economics is going to change a great deal. Because the fire station over on the Paradise Ford property was about, a little over $14 million, and that didn't include providing underground parking. Underground parking was an additional three by our estimates, so about $17 million on the fire station. If we were going to be involved in Rock Haven, it would probably be at least to the extent that we've outlined here, maybe, and it may actually be more, but at least to the extent that we've outlined here, which is in the neighborhood of 4.5, almost 6.5 million dollars with some level of rehab. So we could have, we could have different components, but if we're going to address fire station and library, I suspect the numbers are going to be as great, if not greater than what we have here. Again, we can go back to one of the earlier sheets, and you can pick different pieces out that you'd like to pursue. We have some estimas there, but I suspect we'd find that if we're going to be involved in Rock Haven to this extent, then this isn't a bad number of alternatives and dollars attached, given that.
Well, I think it's a, it may not be bad for the level of projects that we envisioned, but I think it pretty much sucks up all, if not the most, if not all, of the, the money that we have available that we're playing with. And I just think that, I think we owe it to the community to distribute some of that money throughout the community and for different types of uses as well. I mean, I'm talking about the street repair, not just the aquatics complex, but there's a, a whole, we know what the list is, we've been through it. It's just such a large amount in relation to the, the limited funds that we have currently available. That's what, that's what concerns me. And if there were lesser measures available, which would really accomplish what I think was the, the community's driving request and mandate, which is to do something with Rock Haven, preserve it as an open space, as a historical center, I'm all, you know, I'm all for that, but I'm not sure that, that the, I mean, is the driving force here to get a, a nice retail development across on the Paradise Ford? If that's, if that's our goal, let's, let's do that, but we're really, we have a lot of things on this plate that just, just suck up all the, the funding.
Mr. Weaver.
Jim, is it better for us, I've dealt with 10-year programs so often, anything past the budget year plus one, you know, forget about it. It's wishful thinking, too many variables are in the equation. Should we just be concentrating, I mean, since we're all over the map here, maybe just concentrating the first two or three years that we're able to touch on and see where you have... or three years that we're able to touch on and see where you have the dollars. Why look at year five, six out? It's there, but it's going to change, obviously, with what decisions we make in the close years. Does that make any sense?
Well, here's why I think we need to take the approach that's outlined here, which is to look at more than just two or three years. First, some of these projects are of a magnitude and complexity, they can't be accomplished in two or three years.
Understood.
Let's just take replacement of library and fire station. That takes three to five years, from the day you say go to the day we have a new facility, you're probably five years. That's probably a fair estimate.
But if we don't want to start even talking about that in the next two or three years...
Well, if you don't want to talk about it in the next two or three years, then you won't be doing anything for the next eight years, or 10 years.
Because of the design...
Well, because of how long it takes to find a site, to do design, to deal with community environmental issues, depending on what you're going to be building on and what you're going to be building. So there are some projects here... let's take the Dog Park as an example. No problem. That is a relatively easy project from the standpoint of complexity. And in fact, we think there's a potential site with, assuming environmental goes well and meetings with neighborhoods go well. That's a project that, you know what, you want to move it up a year or push it back five years? No harm, no foul, because it probably has a planning period of about 12 months and a relatively short construction period. But something like your plans for Rockhaven, which I would hope, before you'd buy it, you'd have at least some general vision as to what you'd want to use it for, that could be a multi-stage project, a fire station, a library, those things take five years from the beginning of thinking about it to accomplishing it.
I missed that, but in the nine to 10 years that I ran the programming department for the Corps, the way I put it out, like, take the Dog Park. There's land acquisition, that's first. Then the next bar out is design, environmental, whatever. Third one out is plans and specs. Fourth one out is construction. And you can move those within the category. Instead of just pulling a lump sum or showing two lump sums, two years, is the component breakdown. We could acquire the Dog Park site, for instance. We could even go and do the environmental and everything and put off the construction two or three years.
You could.
But the way it's presented, you can't tell the flexibility you have within the schedules. And I just picked the easiest one to attack.
Although you could tell us that, let's take Rockhaven site for an example. We've anticipated involvement and acquisition happening the remainder of this fiscal year and next year, about 18 months. If you didn't want to do anything with the property for a longer period of time than the roughly 18 months to two years we have here, you could certainly do that, but I know what will happen in the community. You'll start getting calls to use it. So, again, that's why this plan is to generate this kind of discussion. You'll see, with respect to Rockhaven, fire station, library, we have here, we have set out here a schedule that anticipates we'd move forward from beginning to completion in a reasonable period of time. And in most cases, that takes about five or six years from beginning to end. That's what this proposes. If you'd want to push those out farther, you can, but I know what will happen with Rockhaven or even the Dog Park. If you've purchased the property and you've been through environmental and design, and then say, "But you know what, we're not going to construct it for two or three more years", I suspect you'll begin to hear from those constituents, you know, now that you've gone halfway, "We'd like you to complete it." But this schedule permits that.
I'm saying, what if there's natural calamities three years out? Funds are going elsewhere. If I talk about the unknown factors that are out there, the near term, you can pretty well get a gauge on, and we can know what the community would like and what we would like, but you may be pushing construction or something further out because of a natural calamity or other things that could occur.
Right, and I think that's a given. If in 2009, '10 we have a natural calamity, then frankly, we'd be back saying, "You know what, all bets are off on the CIP irrespective of what we planned, we've got to start evaluating again." But remember, you evaluate the CIP every year.
Yeah.
So every year, you're going to have a plan for 10 years, but you know what, we're going to come back each year and say, "Here's where we thought we'd be and here's what we wanted to do." Has that changed at all? If not, we continue to proceed with the plan. At some point, you do put some steps in play that, you know what, if you don't complete them, then you will have invested money for nothing, but it is important to have a long-term plan.
Just my last comment. I used to put a lot of money into projects, design, plan specs, construction, and those schedules would slip out. We might get the resources for design because of smaller amounts, and the design would go on the shelf, based on available funds and other priorities that happen to come up within the community.
And that could happen here.
Mr. Quintero.
But, yeah, following Mr. Weaver's logic, the reality is that purchasing Rockhaven then gives us the opportunity, at a bare minimum, just to clean the site up and to make it somewhat habitable, including the idea of an urban park in there, and then the other expenditures will come when they come. But, I mean, I personally think just purchasing the property is going to be the best thing we can do. I mean, we'll go ahead and clean it up and green it out.
And we can hurt the GYA.
Yeah, the GYA can go in there and clean it up.
Clean the whole site.
So in and of itself, we're going to already take a big step by getting that property in our hands.
Mr. Draymond.
Well, here's the problem with all of that, and it's the answer to your question, Mr. Mayor, which is, what is driving this? What is driving this is twofold. It's that we're being told, "New fire station is needed," and the public interest in purchasing Rockhaven. So when you look at the numbers, no matter what you do with Rockhaven, even if you just green it up, if you look at the number here in terms of a purchase price, the numbers are virtually the same regardless. If you build a new fire station, you're looking at something like, I'm hearing, because we weren't thinking about the parking, $17 million. And if we remodel the library in the way it was being discussed prior to any of this talk about Rockhaven, you're still looking at, what was it, around $4 to $5 million. So you're at $22 million. And between those two, just between the fire station, as was proposed, and the library. If you're saying that we generally are in agreement up to the point of at least purchasing Rockhaven, well, with some sort of joint venture, we hope, we're looking at a purchase price of $4.2 million. So now you're actually, the cost is even more. You're looking at, what, $26.2 million doing it that way. So it is actually less to do it this way. So what's driving it is not a retail anchor. That comes as a sort of a perk because you're not using that property, so it could be developed in a way that we're not shelling out a lot of cash to do it, but we're gaining a ground lease or what have you there. But if you just take Rockhaven out of the picture altogether, and look at what we were talking about before, you're looking at about $22 million between the two.
The way you cut it.
That's right.
It's going to cut, yeah.
That's right. So the driving force here are twofold, really. It's the need for the fire station that's being described to us, and the public request or public interest in Rocket.
And to add to that, you could leave the fire station and the library exactly the way they are. They're city-owned. The Rockhaven property may not always be there, accessible for us to purchase, so do you want to get that in the bank at the very least, even if...
Well, and even to say that, Mr. Weaver, then you would be saying that you're ignoring what is being presented here, which is some interest in expanding the library and the fires, even if you didn't do that.
I'm just saying, you need, if you're going to start this moves around the chessboard, if you don't have the Rockhaven site, you take away a big option.
Exactly.
Now you've constrained it down, like having as many options as we can. The public wants it, we've all seen it, we all think it has value, and some purchase along with some other entity to use the site makes perfect sense to me. I was opposed to it at first, but it makes sense to me now. And as long as I know I own that, then I own the fire station property, the library property, and a portion of the Rockhaven property. Now I can do the domino shift around on the properties.
But when we talk about the fire station, let's be clear about this. The $17 million price tag is for a completely new fire station.
Right.
Which has a useful life of 60 years? We're talking about brand spanking you. This other measure that we're talking about, and we, I know we put the screws to Chief Biggs to say, "Really, tell us what can you do a remodel for?" And we were given a time period of maybe 10 to 20 years, I think they would be suitable. So we're not comparing the same. This scenario is not giving us a brand-new fire station. And just so we're clear about it, the other, the $17 million, there is added value to that and added life and added use. So it's not, I mean, we're saving money in one scenario, on the fire station, yes, but we're not necessarily getting a greater value or a longer term of service.
All right, I clearly understand that, but in my view, if we went the short term on the fire, we're buying time. I mean, limited resources, not enough resources, what will the future provide us in terms of additional revenue in that we can act faster on? I'd be willing to bet a new fire station there, if all the shifts fall where we think, wouldn't occur for at least 10 years, 10, 15 years. Another council will sit here and make the decision in the future.
Ken, if in your long-range planning, if you continue to utilize the resources for something else, you'll never get a new fire station and library. They are big-ticket items. They're very expensive. They are hard to find the resources in any given year to go do one.
But if we commit to the short-term investment in the fire now, we're in essence saying, we're not going to program it for a new fire station for at least five to 10 years out, aren't we? We're making that decision. This council is, at least.
Well, in this plan, we're trying to address the need for the fire station. Yes, the library could stay where it is, but the library would like to have an additional $3 to $5 million so it can expand the library and make it more usable. The $5.5 million for Fire Station 29, as Chief Biggs has looked at the existing station with engineers... Chief, why don't you come up again? The view is that the existing bones are very good, they're very sturdy. With an expansion, whether you get 15, 20, or more, likelihood is you'd get more with an expanded fire station.
That's correct, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Starbird, Council. Basically, we had it looked at by an architect who felt that within the existing structure, which doesn't include moving, because we'd need to move out while it was being allowed, that we could make it last for about 10, 15 years. It's hard to say. The structure is a poured-concrete structure, that's a very substantial structure. The design and the building itself has basically fallen apart, but the structure is fine. Everything around it, the roof, the floors, everything else leaks and is just in bad shape, but the structure itself, that $5.5 million, would allow us to remodel that part of the structure. We're planning on that as being, using, or leaving the library pretty much as-is and just remodeling it internally. We would take a lot more money to do the entire site. Again, we could start from scratch for probably $14 million, but the, that was the description that we used before. It's basically to gut the structure and rebuild it as-is, try to expand the engine room as best we can because it's way too small for the apparatus that's in it, and leave the library and use it for a different purpose. But that was our plan for the $5.5 million.
Jim, we've gone around in circles on this for three weeks, on what dominoes, we're all aligned, we know what, I think we know what we'd like to do. And, you know, there's step one, step two, step three. If you don't get past step one, you're not going to get the other two.
Well, you have done and are doing exactly what happens to your executive team in the four times we sit down to work on a plan. We spend most of our time talking about this combined project and very little of our time on the other 15 or 20 projects on the list.
Guess you know where the priority is.
We just had to get past it somehow so we could do some planning. Again, as we've evaluated it, if the desire is to address the library, or to address the fire station need and the expansion of the library need, and to address Rockhaven, as well as leaving ourselves flexibility on how the Paradise Ford site could be used, we think this is a good way to go. And from an economic standpoint, if we're going to try and address the need for libraries and fire station, and address the community need for Rockhaven, this is a good combination to do that. Granted, it isn't a brand-new fire station from ground up, but you know for $5.5 million it buys you quite a bit for a good period of time.
Well, that's where I'm at. I've heard it over and over, and I buy into that. A portion of Rockhaven purchase, design, eventual construction, library apportioned, open space for community on the site, and eventual modification of the fire station once the library is moved out by another 10 years.
So let me ask a question, then. We have $4.2 million for the Rockhaven apportioned, or... What if that's not the price?
Then we have to come back and address this.
And I know this gets into a lot of closed-session discussions, but...
Right, this is just for planning purposes. This anticipates the ability to have a private partner. We're anticipating in all likelihood the Rockhaven site can't be purchased outright for this, and there'll need to be some kind of a development plan for some portion of the site, whether it's housing or some other use that we need to have in order to keep our net costs in the CIP. For example, if there could be a housing component in some part of that, could be affordable housing, it could be a developer with market-rate housing, senior, any number of different things. We've anticipated, though, that there'd be some partner with us for the utilization of the site that would keep our costs for land acquisition down to about the $4.2 million range.
Is there any scenario in which the property is not available at all?
That depends on the will and interest of the city council. I mean, you have the ability, through eminent domain, to acquire the site if you think it's in the public's best interests, but it takes four votes.
And we would also have something to say about the development of the apportioned.
Oh, absolutely. If indeed this scenario came together, you'd have complete control over what happened with the site. The balancing act would be how much the city ends up carrying in costs and how much you're able to offset with whatever development might take place.
I just wanted the public to hear that.
Why don't we move on, Jim, to, I think we've aired out some of the issues on that.
That's what we needed to do as we put this together because we had a hard time getting off of this one.
I told you where I am. You told us, Mr. Weaver, thank you.
Maybe we can move on to one that might be a little bit easier, and that's the, well, no, fire training regional facility that might even be easier than Dog Park. Chief, why don't you come up and remind everybody again what this provides for?
The $500,000 that's in the request for the capital improvement is for the site development, for a new fire training center. We have identified land in the Shoal Canyon dump area, and this would be for pads, for paving, for electrical sewer water, that kind of thing up to the site.
This is essentially a match for a million-dollar grant that we've already received approval on.
Correct. The million-dollar grant can only be used for training aids and tools and things like that, training buildings, but we have to provide the infrastructure.
So you have a site at Shoal?
Yeah, we have identified a site.
It takes into account the expansion of Shoal that we voted on, so it's on...
Yeah, we've been working with Public Works on it.
So it's at the, probably at the rear where the maximum elevation has been reached.
There's a, yeah, there's a kind of a cutoff mountaintop back there that...
Yes, on solid ground, on rock.
On solid ground, yes. No gases coming up or anything.
Good.
Okay, that's how we did that one. The crime analysis system, $60,000, is small enough, we presumed you wouldn't want to devote a lot of time to this one. Do you want any information about that? Okay, street rehabilitation. This one gets a little more questionable in terms of level. This is the one where you recall, we commit all of our gas tax revenues... Steve, come on up. We commit all of our gas tax revenues to street rehabilitation reconstruction.
This is a supplement.
Which is about $4 to $4.5 million a year, Steve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Starbird, we currently have about $6.2 million budgeted for this fiscal year.
Does that, that doesn't, how much in the, so $6.2 is the gas tax and...
$6.2 is the total budget, probably close to about $4.5 of that.
Okay, so we supplement the... This gets us closer to a level that Public Works would like for street maintenance. The request here was how much originally, Steve, in the unfunded list?
Six.
$6 million a year. And that would keep our maintenance at what level?
That would keep us at that 70 to 73% of pavement quality index that I gave you the presentation on earlier in the year.
Does that take care of the most in need streets?
It absolutely starts at the most in need streets. We're down to, as you recall, the pavement quality index goes from 0 to 100%, so starting down at the lower end, which is where we pretty much work from right now.
So, I'm wondering if we don't give you more, have you got adequate dollars to address the worst streets with the 6.2 on an annual basis?
We will, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Weaver, will continue to address the worst streets. Will we get them all?
No.
We will have some degradation.
You'll continue to fall behind.
Yes.
How much more do you need to get rid of the worst streets on an annualized basis?
For us, Mr. Weaver, for us to remain at the 70, 73 percent, we'd need $12 million a year, which is another $6 million on top of what we have.
And that's why, again, this isn't rocket science, some of this is just, you know what? We're going to try and do the best we possibly can. These numbers are somewhat arbitrary, looking at the burden this CIP is trying to carry in early years. We said, you know, we'd like, we'd like to have the ability to do six more, but we just can't. So, this is kind of second-best, and this will be a challenge in and of itself.
As a whole, though, our streets look a heck of a lot better than LA's streets.
Oh, yes, Mr. Weaver, we're at about that 73 percent right now.
Which is an enviable position among cities.
It is, and of course, that's citywide, on average. So, I know some people will say, well, some of the residuals are looking a little shabby, and they are, because those take the lower priority for the major-minor arterials. But overall, a very enviable position for us to be in.
Does the 70 percentile get you through the pothole streets, and the total replacement streets, and to the slurry kind of repairs?
Yes, sir, Mr. Weaver, we, in fact, I've wanted to increase the slurry, and we have every year that I've been in this position, and most of that slurry money goes onto the residential streets. So, those that are still in pretty good shape, those that we can salvage, I put as much of that slurry money onto those streets, because they have less of a load, and we can prolong the life of those. And then trying to get the resurfacing on the major-minor arterials before we get to the reconstruction phase, which is the most expensive phase, that's complete reconstruction of the streets.
One of the reasons for making this lighter in the earlier years is we will have a one-time, about $6 million in bond funds that'll come in, that'll be helpful.
Correct. Half of that has already been approved, so we should be seeing that hopefully this fiscal year, and the other half next fiscal year.
So, again, this is a level, we'd like to be at six. We don't think there's any way we can reasonably get ourselves to $6 million a year. Next best is to try and get to this level, and again, we haven't started pushing resources around yet, but this is something we'd like to try and get to, given we've got about $6 million infusion from state bond funds coming in.
And each year, as Mr. Starbird had mentioned earlier, we review this every year. Each year, I will come back with what the pavement quality index is and a re-review, so you can see that. If you were to ask me now, what does this mean, where will the index go next year? I'm not quite sure, but we'll review that every year and give you the absolute numbers, so you can see where we're at.
And frankly, it might not change next year, but at the end of 10 years, without adequate maintenance, you will see a change, you'll see a degradation.
That's excellent, excellent point.
So, we're looking at the 24.5 million, is that what?
24.5 million over the 10-year period.
Over 10 years.
Now, again, you could knock off $1.5 million a year, you could push these a year back. Again, it'll, it's, it's an incremental thing. You may not see a lot from one year to the next, but over 10 years or 15 years, we may go from being a 70 percent down to a 65 or 60 percent. It takes a long, long time, when you've got good streets, to finally see the impact, but once you do see the impact, then it's a long, long road to get yourself back out again, because it's so expensive.
Correct.
Okay. Steve, why don't you touch again on the street name signs? Here, we again made a pretty arbitrary decision, and that is, we would embark on a city-wide street name sign change-out, not in the timeframe that the, was it federal law?
Actually, it was the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which comes from the feds and is adopted by Caltrans, they have a new reflectivity requirement for the signs. It was at the same time, we were thinking, our signs are about 30 years old, they were all hand-painted by a very talented individual many, many years ago, and they just need to be redone. The law states, or what the requirement now is, that we have an inventory of the signs, that's it, and we have that inventory. But there is both federal and state law pending to upgrade all of your signs to a certain level of reflectivity. Most of our, all signs. So, all of our regulatory signs, speed limit, stop, and so forth, those already are done with the required reflectivity, the material that they use on the signs. We have not done that with the street name signs, they have the lower priority. So, that could be a requirement within the next couple of years.
So, we could, Steve first presented us with doing them all in three years or four years, I think.
Three years, yes.
And we said, you know what, we're going to try and do $175,000 worth a year, for however long it takes us to replace them all out.
We don't know what the mandate will be yet, do we? They come down, they may say within a certain timeframe.
They could, Mr. Weaver, they very well could say, well, you have to have it done in two years, in that case, as we've said with other things, we'll be back to talk to you.
Except for the lapel part, yeah.
We'll be back to talk to you. We have about 4,400 intersections in the city, so, that's the number of signs roughly that we have to deal with.
Okay.
Okay.
Central?
Central Avenue is one that we've plugged in here at roughly $12 million, and you'll see in the note, potential funding sources. I continue to believe that this is a project that could be eligible for GRA funding if we don't find other sources to help support it. So, if, indeed, that comes about, then we could be taking this burden off of the general CIP fund and shifting it over to the GRA, but the GRA is going to be carrying a lot of burden here. If we allocate money for parks and libraries, if we do a bond issue that's going to support the CIP, then we're just not sure of its capacity in this timeframe to support it. So, we've left it on here for now, but we'd want to take a look at that.
Isn't Central Avenue improvements part of the town center?
It's part of the DSP, long-term planning, and you recall, what the environmental indicated was that, subject to a financial feasibility plan, we'd attempt to do these improvements, but that means you've got to have a plan for funding it first.
We're doing work out there now, aren't we?
Yes, Mr. Weaver, there is a portion from Colorado to Wilson, this is Wilson to Glen Oaks.
Yeah.
The remainder of it.
So, the environmental, so, subject to being able to find the resources to get it done, and that was the one condition, that you'd be able to find, have a financing plan for it, obviously, then you'd attempt to get the improvements done. Again, this is one that could slide back a year, if the GRA is able to do it, if we're able to do it out of some of the earlier bond funds, it could happen sooner, but it could slide back a year as well.
I keep asking you for more details. Once again, it's not necessarily a widening, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, there is some widening in areas, we're attempting to put in dedicated right-turn lanes and so forth, in order to keep traffic flowing in the, in the two or three through-lanes that we can. We're trying to re-establish the bus stops at areas that will be less prohibitive to traffic flow. You did ask me, we have level of service, the famous level of service, which I know sometimes is pretty difficult to see, that's the A through F ranking. I'm trying to get something that's a little bit easier to understand and put your arms around, but essentially, what the mobility plan said is, we're pretty low right now, especially at the northern part of Central, and as you approach Colorado, those are in the D, almost F area. By doing this, in 10 years, it keeps us there. We don't degrade any further. And of course, I know that the line we always get with level of service is, what is, what's after us?
So, some of the right-turn lanes, for instance, the corner of, say, Lexington and Central, so on the northbound approach, you could theoretically get rid of a couple of parking spaces and have a right-turn.
Correct.
Lane on to...
And we did, and we did have some minor widening in some of the blocks north from Broadway, didn't we?
We do.
Which was a rather expensive component, because you're taking out curb gutter, moving street trees, potential utility relocations, that sort of thing.
The right-of-way is tight, so where we have right-of-way availability, we have done the widening, otherwise you lose parkings, with the most likely scenario is, as you recall, in some of the southern areas, on Brand, near the Americana, when we redid Brand, we took away some parking to put dedicated right-turn lanes, eastbound Broadway, for instance, and that allows, that allows free-flow right-turn traffic, so that you can keep the through-traffic moving, not having to stop for right turn.
But there's another factor. All the developments that are proposed along Central, we're going to be requiring additional dedication, right? Additional width, traffic lane, whatever, all paid for by the developers.
Wherever we can condition a development, we absolutely do that.
Right, at the corner of Central and Sanchez, and the Crocodile Cafe, that for sure is going to be an entire...
That's all built into the current design.
Entire lane. So, reduces our cost.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Let's move on to the...
Fernando Road Rehab, I don't recall what the numbers were on the unfunded list. We've made an assumption here, that if there is additional San Fernando Road Rehab, it'll be out of the San Fernando Project area account, and not a burden on the CIP, so we're not showing any CIP commitment. The note here is, it would be GRA funding, probably three-plus years out, when they begin to generate more tax increment in the San Fernando Road Corridor project account.
Okay.
ADA upgrades, Steve, why don't you touch on this one, if you can?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, ADA upgrades is just the general upgrades to city facilities. As you're aware, we're going through the process now, doing our survey, and then we'll do our accessibility plan, which we will hope to have done by the end of fall. The Parks Department is finishing up their part, we're finishing up our part, we're getting together very shortly to put it together. What that'll then have in it is the areas that we need improvements with estimated dollars. From that point, you go into the actual design and construction costs, but we're looking at a number that's just right now, about $25 million for city facilities. We'll fine-tune that number once we get all the survey data in, and put it to a design phase.
And if you're talking about ADA curbs, you tend to group them into one contract, where one pouring concrete is working in a sector, rather than skipping all over the community, right?
Correct. And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is not only the infrastructure, the street/road infrastructure, this is the building infrastructure as well.
Do we have any discretion not to do these?
Well, I defer to Mr. Howard to see what we...
Do we have any, I mean, is this a choice? Is this a thumb up or thumb down? I mean, it's mandated thumb up, isn't it?
You don't have a choice when you do a project, when you improve a building, for example, you have to address the ABA if you get above a certain level.
Correct.
What we've anticipated here, and for example, if we're doing a street and sidewalk project, because we now, we now lump sidewalk, curb, gutter, streets, all under street rehab, right, Steve? So, if you're doing a sidewalk project, we're going to address the handicap requirements as we do the sidewalk. This is the deficiency plan that's being created, and it's the general fund's contribution, the general fund CIP's contribution outside of specific projects that would be funded in the CIP, and outside of other funds like GWP, or parks that might do a project and incorporate it, and that would be addressing the handicap requirements. This is kind of over and above all of that. It doesn't include the extent to which we could apply for CDBG money and utilize those funds for specific handicap improvements. Again, what we said is, we have a $25 million deficiency out there. Over time, we'll address those through building rehabilitation projects, work in streets, sidewalks, and gutters, park individual projects that are funded, so money wouldn't necessarily come out of this account, it would come out of the new Parks Fund. This is money to address those things that don't fall in those other particular categories. And hopefully, then, through all of those, we can, over 10 years, get ourselves up to speed relative to those deficiencies. Sorry, Scott.
And essentially, that's completely correct, with the exception of the Barton-Sacramento case, which expands it a little bit more, that, for example, if you're doing a street improvement project, you will be required to make appropriate curb cuts for sidewalk access.
And we would, and that, and for example, we would, we would say, that'll come out of the street rehab money.
We, and we already do that.
Right.
And in fact, as you're aware, the law, the specifications for those have changed, and not only do we go in and do new ones, we upgrade the existing ones to meet the current code standards.
So, we're anticipating about two-thirds of the need could be met through non-general fund sources, and this provides for about a third of the need that can't be met through those sources directly from the general fund CIP. And once again, each year, you'll evaluate this, and see how well you've done, and decide if that's enough. Can you, can you push this up to implement it more quickly? But you'll have that conversation each year. It was our best take on how to make a commitment over and above specific projects, to have as a goal over 10 years, to meet all of the deficiencies.
Correct. Lot of path to travel, lot of ramping, lot of elevator, bathrooms, those are some of the key areas that are, that are included in this.
Okay, thank you. Next is...
City entry markers. Here, again, the estimate was $200,000 per major arterial to have city entry markers. We just anticipated here, $50,000 a year, to do what you can. Some of them are more substantial markers, some are lesser markers, we would just allocate $50,000 a year to do what we can. If you do, if you do a major marker, and it's centered around a project area, we could probably go draw on redevelopment agency money for that, but for those that don't have another source, it's just allocating $50,000 to do what we can.
So, Rob, that's it, we anticipate, we're going to have to go through a whole process of looking at different designs, and coming back to you for approval on the different types of markers we use, from the more elaborate entry markers, to maybe something that's more along the signage route, but developing a palette, if you will, of entry markers, all approved by the city council. And then this was a number we plugged in that we thought might get us there. We anticipated key entry points to the city, you may want to have more than those, you may want to have less than those, that'll all be things we bring back to you.
Okay.
The Neighborhood Services Field Operations Facility, we have nothing plugged in. Originally, there was a request for $100,000 in '07, '08, and I think there was a separate way to fund that?
We're looking, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're looking at some options. This is, this is a field office, if you will, and storage area that Sam Engel uses for his field crews. He's been sort of nomadic, if you will, in where he's gone, from place to place. He's currently residing at what is the Future Transportation Maintenance Facility, so we've sort of given him eviction notice, or that's what they've accused me of, giving him eviction notice. So, we are working with him to try to find an alternate location, which we're pretty comfortable, we might be able to do that, and we'll get back to you. A lot of what he uses is modular stuff, trailers, enclosed freight bins, so I don't think this is, it will entail a lot. We just need to find a site, see if we can put down some paving, and have some secure area for him, easily accessible. We've got a couple of options. We're going to go back to the drawing board with him, work through those, and then see where we're at.
Okay, so far, so good. Then we'll move into parks and recreation. George, come on up.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Raymond.
Just a general question, while Mr. Chapchan's coming up. So, we're moving to the area of talking about parks and recreation areas, maybe not just for us, but also for people who are watching, or going to be reading about this meeting this morning. Can we talk about how, what we have done with regard to impact fees, and tax increment financing, and so on, figures into these numbers that are now, you know, I think part of the perception in the public, at least based on the feedback I'm getting, is, well, we've done that, so now the money's just going to come pouring in, take care of these issues.
Like Jim said, it's not in there yet.
Well, no, I understand. I'm not just talking about for our edification, I mean, for people in the public who are looking at what we're talking about, and have been following over the past weeks, that we have, we have done a couple of things with future monies for parks and recreational facilities and so on. Might be wondering, well, then why are they still here, if we have all these funds that are going to be pouring in? It might be worthwhile to address it.
It might be useful, so that people can sort of put costs in the context of some of those actions that you've taken. Park, park library impact fees, as an example. The pipeline fee that you have established is $2,000 per unit. Let's just, let's just make an assumption that in the central project area, you could have 1,100 units in five years in the pipeline. Now, somebody might argue, whether it's 800 or 1,500, but just assume it's 1,100. Times $2,000 would mean that you'd generate about $2,200,000 in park library fees. Put that in the context...
What's more, though, Jim, I mean, the pipeline was...
It's 2,000.
We're towards the end of the pipeline, I think, at this point, aren't we? We're going to the 3,500.
You'll probably have about 800-plus in the pipeline by the time you're done, the ones that have had first-stage design review. The question then comes, how many more will you have after that? If you think about it, you've had Intricor, Amity, Mapleton, all pipeline projects, those are the large projects in the downtown area. Phil, can you help here? But in any case, I mean, make the number larger. Let's say it's 2,000 units. Let's just assume 2,000 units, that you may have 1,000 of those in pipeline, which if That you may have 1,000 of those in pipeline, which if you apply the $2,000 is 2 million. And let's say the others, the other 1,000 is the first phase, there's 3.5 million, so 5.5 million dollars over a five-year period. If you look at what it costs to develop a soccer field or a park, well, that is one soccer field, assuming you have the land for it. So that's the kind of challenge that you face. The unknown is how much we'll generate in tax increment, and you haven't made a decision on how much you want to allocate. But if that were, say, $4,000 a unit, then you could have twice that amount, say, coming off of projects in, in the central project area. So you could have another $5 million or so.
Right, but the difference also is that that'll be coming in every year. So it won't be a one-time fee, the tax increment is gonna be-
That is correct. I, I think the, the answer to Mr. Draymond's question might be all of those, the, the impact fee and the tax increments financing, whatever amount you set aside is dependent on those projects actually happening. So in, in your planning, and I think what we've done here is assume that, that those dollars could be used for other projects, and we still need to plan for these. Certainly, if that, if they come to fruition, that funding is available, you can plug it in in one of the other projects and then use that money for something else.
And let's keep in mind, this, this plan doesn't balance. This plan is underwater. We've got to go back to the resources side, and frankly, we'll be plugging in some of those figures on the park projects to help bring us back above the waterline again, otherwise we won't get there. So there's gonna need to be an accommodation for the, the resources from impact fees, from tax increment financing. We're probably gonna have to plug in a little bigger bond issue for GRA, and I think we're gonna be able to. Otherwise, this plan isn't gonna balance, even the way we have it lined out here. And I don't think in the park area, it's gonna get you necessarily where you'd like to be, but it's a step in the right direction.
There are some more of those variables-
Absolutely.
-that we're talking about. There's too many out there, natural and man-made.
Should we, should we pick up with the Pacific Park pool?
Sure.
Let me go back. John, does that, does that get?
Yeah, it does. I mean, I just think it needed to be touched.
Yeah. My, the, the summary, I think the take-home message is there's, there is a, a very large park need, there's a lot of interest by the community. Certainly, tax increment and park impact fees is not going to be the entire answer to the needs long-term. You'll still probably need to commit some portion of your discretionary CIP funds continuing for parks, open space and libraries and likes. Okay, George?
The Pacific Park neighborhood pool? At this point, we have $2.6 million available for. You asked us to come back with a pool for approximately $5 million, and, and we think we can do that. It would be a basic pool, 25 yards, six-lane pool. We do have $2.6 million available now. We'll be receiving another 1.2 million if approved by the city council, by the CDBG funding source. And we plugged in 1.4 million in '09, '10 to fill that gap for the 5 million, and we should be able to complete the pool in '09, '10.
George, I think this actually gives a total of 6.5 million?
Um, 5.1.
No, you're, no, you're right. No, you're right. 5.1, okay. And we, we should note there in the right-hand column under amounts, we have the million two from CDBG in '07, '08. This anticipates the council directing that we'd pre-designate a million two in '08, '09, an additional million two in '09, '10, and that we'd get the state grant of a million four.
We do have the state grant.
Right. So, so if there's gonna be any reluctance on the part of the council to pre-designate CDBG for this purpose, then we should know that now because we'll need to, we'll need to fill that gap.
See, here, here goes my problem, Mr. Mayor, this stuff. I look at this, I'm looking 1.4 million, but I know you gotta go through the design, the plant specs and whatever, coming from the other sources. It might be nice to have a chart, a bar chart or whatever that shows when we're starting, what year we're starting in, doing the design, whatever, leading up to 1.4 million. And I look at, oh gee, no, can't do it all in one year.
Right.
And we look over, and there's other ones over here.
Well, you'd have all your funding, by '09, '10, you'd have all your funding for a $5 million pool.
So we're gonna, we're gonna award the contract and make all the construction payments and have it all done in one fiscal year.
No, you'll probably, no, this will probably end up stretching out over two years.
Yeah, not in one fiscal year.
So that's what I'm used to budgeting.
We do have 2.6 million available this fiscal year. What we're doing is we're doing the environmental work, the design work at this point. In '08, '09, we'll be doing the construction drawings and getting prepared to do the actual construction.
The only point is, it's not displayed on one sheet. I just see 1.4 million, and I have to recall that you're doing all that other now or different stages.
Right. And I think what this was, these were the unfunded. It may, I don't know if finance is here, but it may, it may show on the funded list.
Understand, it's the unfunded, but still, it's giving me a partial picture unless I can recall everything else that goes on.
Right, right.
Just my own.
Mr. Weaver, Councilmember Weaver, that is a good point, and unfortunately, somewhat of the limitation of how you're seeing these projects, these are just the unfunded projects.
Understood.
When you actually go to the capital improvement program, they are spread out, as you had suggested.
I just wish there was a way to-
Yes. Combine, and we, and we actually need to do that, where this summarizes the available funding on this form, but what it doesn't do is spread it out in the, the way that it is-
This, this just notes, what year do we have to make our commitment of money? But as George points out, we already have the million two, we already have the 100, the million four, so they will back up from this. If this was a go, they'd back up from this, and in, in fact, currently, and in '08, '09, they'd be doing all the preparatory work, so we could go out to bid earlier and do construction in '09, '10 when we have the funding.
Mr. Draymond. Can, can somebody speak to the pool you're speaking about, George? What is that? In other words, we had some consultants here that were telling us about a variety of different types of pools, recreational pools and so on, some with lots of bells and whistles, some multiple, you know, what are we talking about with this?
Yeah, I, I think this is just a basic 25-yard-long, six-lane-wide pool, community pool, wouldn't be a diving board, it would just be a kind of a basic pool with some surface area around the pool. It just kept it at a minimum, really, with shower facility, no concession area, no, none of that.
Here's how we described it in the more detailed table you got, more of the early study sessions. We described it as an option one, 25-yard, six-lane pool, administration and bath house building, concrete deck, shade structures, very minimal. And you recall the consultant that came in said that, that economically, you could be better off investing more money in some of the, the, the features and accessories of a more recreational nature because you'll increase your revenues. And the consultant's going to come back with an analysis on a basic pool like that, but then if you invested more, how would that change the, the revenue picture for the pool? So you, you might be better off putting 2 more million dollars into this, into the facility, but as a result, you'll generate a lot more revenue to pay back the incremental cost because it'll attract more people. This provides just for the very basic pool.
And again, if you recall, I think the consultant talked about a zero-entry pool for kids, that they can at least enter that area and play in that area, and plus this smaller 25-yard pool with a concession standout would help bring in people and raise some money for, to offset the, the maintenance of it, the operation. But we will be coming back. The consultant's already starting the work, and we'll be coming back to you with that.
If, if your feeling is you want to go beyond this, we should probably plug some dollars in here, anticipating at least, for example, an option two, which was going to be an additional 3.25 million dollars.
Total of 8.1, I think, yeah.
Right. Any direction you want to give us there?
No, I'm for the basic, at least until the consultant zeros in on if we can include some surface amenities to draw more people or whatever. I mean, I envision a family pool, although at 25 yards, people can certainly go there and swim.
They can jump in, cool off, you know?
This will be more of a replacement for what was there before.
Right.
Well, the only, I agree, but the only addition that I'm interested, that, well, I was saying, the only thing I'd be interested in, but an additional thing I'd be interested in hearing about with regard to this is the zero-entry, and here's why. It's not just related to the children, I'm also curious with ADA issues, it provides the ability for people to cool off who have, would have, otherwise have trouble entering the pool and exiting the pool.
Absolutely. And I think even if we go with just a 25-yard, we will accommodate-
You'll have a combination for hand again. The, the zero-entry was just how they described the totlot pool, which would have a total depth of, what, 18 inches or so?
18 inches, max.
But eve, any pool will have handicap accommodations. It might not, though, be a zero-entry, it might be a lift sort of contraption where somebody on a wheelchair, somebody handicapped, could be lifted into the water.
The only reason I, I mentioned that with a zero-entry is because if you've seen facilities like that, and, you know, if you've had experience either yourself or with family members that, that do have disabilities like that, the, the ability for somebody to, under their own steam and in, you know, entirely on their own, to be able to do this without, you know, getting into a lift and all of that, is really a benefit, and it, it really is a part of the recreational aspect, you know, to just be free of some of the other, other kind of burdens. I can speak for myself, as I was coming through a lot of, you know, rehab years ago, it was a great joy to be able to do some of this stuff on my own and not have to park myself in, in, in a contraption of some sort and, you know, get assistance to do that. It would have been very nice to have been able to just, you know, wheel myself directly in and, and have some benefits that way. But in any case, I, I'm interested in knowing some more about that.
Definitely, we'll, we'll bring that back to you. There are a number of people with disabilities, not just wheelchairs, but stroke victims and things like that.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver?
I want to remind you what I told you before the meeting started, I ought to leave at 11:15.
Okay, Mr. Weaver. Before you go, would you like to hear from the public?
Either way, I've looked through the rest of this, and other than the wireless, other than the wireless communication, that's the only one I'd want questions, more questions on.
We, no doubt, won't get to that today.
Would you like to hear Mr. Phil Potte and Mr. Milano before you leave?
I don't care, I'm leaving at 11:15. Whatever you want to do, Mr. Mayor.
I don't think we can let you go out without hearing from at least Mr. Milano.
It's a study session for us.
Mr. Milano?
It's a study session for us.
You're gonna go out with a bang.
In exchange, you know, we're gonna listen to the public rather than educate ourselves. Fine, I don't care. We'll be back next week.
And then we'll resume, and then we'll take Mr. Phil Potte a little bit later.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian, and thank you, Mr. Weaver, for, for staying for my-
This is my way of torturing you, Mr. Weaver.
Members of the city council, city staff. One of the, it, would it be possible for, for me, I've made a five-minute preparation, if I could have five minutes?
Five minutes.
Okay. I, I say, as a consultant, as I go through different businesses, one of the key issues that I face and that I like to present is the level of communication that an organization has internally and, internally and to the outside. By the way, the information about this meeting was not available on the website, I looked all over for it, and I think it should, where you do a little bit better job of addressing and reaching out to the public so that we can get more public participation in this process. But as I look at this particular document, it just seems to me oftentimes that a lot of the information is predetermined or prepackaged for you to look at. And I think what is missing is a lack of comprehensive overview with regard to all of the capital improvement projects that the city needs, so that they could, all of these decisions could be placed in context of what is needed with regard to the city as a whole, and what is being provided and funded already, and what's yet to be funded. I really would like to urge a, a culture of transparency and really have an opportunity to look at the brutal facts of where we are. And I'm taking that from Jim Collins, from Good to Great. Look at the brutal facts of where we are in Glendale. And the second thing is, what is the problem that we're trying to solve with these particular capital improvement projects? What is the problem? You know, I would love to have seen a five-minute presentation from different departments, given us a summary of the current state of our infrastructure and all the capital improvement needs, from, not just from Public Works as well, with regard to roads and sewers and storm drains and so on, but also from, from GWP and, and any other entity that is going to require the type of capital improvements overall. The, you know, what's the percentage of sewers at over 90% capacity, especially down here in the area where it's growing the most? What is gonna be the input of an additional 10,000 people in this area, and what's gonna be the impact of that on the infrastructure? How many roads should we really, well, it was covered this earlier, and the kind of information I'd like to see is, what should be the investment of roads, minimal, to just to keep up, so that could be allocated every year irrespective of where we are economically? And what is the state of the major power lines? And I know that the power line problems on power one time was due to a major over-capacity problem, under-capacity, I'm sorry, to one of the major lines. So the question is, should we be looking just at the unfunded portion or at both, the funded and the unfunded portion, to figure out in what direction are we headed? What is the demand and what is the deficiency? And without seeing charts and graphs to tell us, look, here is the pent-up demand, and here's the pent-up deficiency that we have to address, how can you make these decisions on choices? Look, I understand, Mr. Draymond, with regard to, to the park facilities up north in Monroe's, because the city has never really proactively invested in parks. You know, you have Verdugo Park, it was donated to the city. You got Carr Park, it was donated to the city. So the public, when they see one piece of land, they say, we better grab it while it's still available. But these are not things that we should be reacting to, these are things that we should be planning for according to the population and the needs of the city. This decision process, you know, should be fully transparent. The information that you use to make the decision should be equally available to the public. It should not be your prerogative to say, look, I have this information and I'll make the decision for you, or I'm your daddy, I'll decide for you. We ought to know the process that you use, the logic that you use to make these particular qualitative decisions. Look, are you solving a political problem, or are you solving a moral problem, or are you solving a core infrastructure problem? You know, it could be a political problem if it is an issue of the fire department having influence in getting their, their, their benefits addressed. It is a moral issue if it is an issue of parts of the community not receiving the attention on parks and open land and infrastructure of Southern Glendale. Or it could be a core infrastructure problem, to say, we absolutely need it because we need to address a terrorist threat, for example, or access to a particular area effectively. The, at the heart of these long-term problems and issues that you have to decide is that you cannot ignore the past, we cannot ignore the population growth, and we cannot ignore the ultimate measure, which is the quality of life that is impacted by these decisions. Now, my time is up, but I, I'll cover that at some other time. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go back to where we left off, Mr. Starbuck.
Mr. Mayor, do you want a little bit of a response to that? Because frankly, I think that, that the comments by Mr. Milano take completely out of context today's study session in the context of the whole budgeting process. I think it is very transparent. You have had discussions, both this year and in prior years, about the other components of your capital budgeting process. You have had those conversations, whether it's GWP-
I've heard it for eleven years.
Whether it's GWP or streets, Mr. Zern has stood where George is right now and talked about the detail of the deficiency in our street system. You have had a discussion about parks. To now take this study session, which I think is number four or five, where you'll remember, you completed the capital improvement program and said, we're going to leave these projects for further work after the start of the fiscal year. Taking out of context that this somehow is the own, this, this unfunded list is the only discussion you've had about CIP in public meetings, I think is taking it out of context and painting a picture that doesn't exist. I think you have had a broader conversation. You come up with a CIP program that lists all former projects that have been funded, all current projects, and projects that for 10 years, and you have spent study session after study session after study session, talking about that, not just this year, but in previous year. This is not, this unfunded list is the end result of what was left over from this year's CIP discussion, that you all said we need to devote more time and attention to just these remaining projects, and that's what you've been doing now for four study sessions. I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Chapchan?
Okay. Just going down the list, Mr. Starbuck, is Doran Street. We did have some money plugged in there, but I-
Yes, Doran Street was a million dollars in one of your previous lists. In discussing that project with housing, the view is that we'll be able to justify those improvements being funded with housing set-aside funds, so we've taken it off of this list of committing general fund CIP funds, too. So the project, and I think on that we note Doran Street Park Housing GRA, we actually haven't put the total funded, there should be a funded number in there, but we believe we can use housing set-aside funds as part of the broader housing project that'll take place on the site. Craig Madlin, you here? Right? That's why that's not showing up there. We touched on the tax-deferred property acquisitions, I think, in the last study session. We've just plugged in $100,000 a year. That's about the level we've gotten to now in the various properties that you express interest in acquiring from the tax-dated list that comes out each year from the county assessor. They've been, we've been successful. Once upon a time, we didn't get any of the properties. Now we seem to be getting about $100,000, this last pot of properties. I think Scott helped me here, I think it was a little over $100,000, as I recall.
Yeah, I recall.
It's been about in that neighborhood, so we've just plugged in $100,000 a year here. dollars a year here. Certainly, some years will be more, some years will be less. Open space, this is, this is a fairly significant policy question for you. We haven't plugged in any money for continuing open space. We used to carry, I think, a half a million dollars a year for open space. In the spate of years where we made some very considerable open space purchases, Oakmont View Five, Poulsen, Flint Canyon, we far exceeded the allocations for decades to come. It was then that we had a conversation during last year's budget discussions that future open space acquisitions would likely be funded through a benefit assessment. We haven't plugged in any continuing funds here for open space. If there was a desire to purchase open space, you'd need to look at options like benefit assessment, or reallocating capital improvement money, or dipping into reserves to make those purchases. You will see, we do have park development money plugged in, you could always reallocate funds if an opportunity arose for open space, but the view is our highest need is in park development as opposed to open space acquisition.
Okay. The next one on the list is Freeway Site A. We looked at this site, it's possible to get six to eight acres of use out of that site, eight if we took out the water pump, so it would be a little bit more expensive, graded around and took out the water pump. We looked at maybe doing a basic minimum soccer field, two soccer fields up there, but just to do that with the grading and excavation, it would be about one point eight million dollars, and that would be no lights, just basic parking, you know, decomposed granite or granite park, gravel parking lot. But what we would get out of that would be just weekend use during the winter hours, so we would only get about eight hundred and thirty hours of use a year from that. And what we thought is, if you're going to go that far, it may just make sense to go a little further and put some lights in there, and maybe even artificial turf. With artificial turf at five, five point five million or so, total price, we could get two fields, maybe a little bit more, and get about three thousand hours of use for the community out of that. So, in terms of cost-benefit, that makes a lot more sense than just eight hundred hours, because during the winter hours, the only folks that would use it, it would be, really, it gets dark about four thirty or five o'clock, so you couldn't use it during the work, weekday, so you'd have to use it during the weekend. But with artificial turf, it could be year-round up to about ten o'clock.
And George, the five and a half million provides for artificial turf with lights, restrooms.
Lights, restroom, paved access, utilities, everything.
All likelihood, two full fields.
Right.
Now, an option is, like we've done at Columbus School, you could look at soccer fields on existing school sites. There, though, you'd be really just upgrading an existing site that's already used for soccer. Any of the fields where an artificial soccer field could go are likely already being used for soccer, so you'd be upgrading it, you'd get extended play, but you wouldn't get the benefits you would from having a new addition to our soccer field inventory. This would provide.
I think that, yeah, the two soccer fields would be adequate for the AYSO uses and some of the other community groups, especially if it's accessible, you know, fifty-two weeks out of the year.
Right. We know if it's a standalone field on a school site, they're going to cost about three and a half million dollars apiece with lights, restroom, and artificial turf. Columbus School is our model for that. So this gives you a pretty good bang for your buck to get two fields in one location for five and a half million dollars.
Includes all the grading.
And includes all the grading, all the utilities, everything.
Lights.
George, would it end up giving us additional land for subsequent development? We reclaim more than we'd use for two soccer fields, don't we?
I think there may be.
Steve, do you recall?
Steve, I don't recall.
Just the two soccer fields, okay, this would be it.
Well, if you went to the eight acres, it would create some more, but the six acres would give us.
Okay. Now, the constraint here is you will hear from the Fern Lane residents on this, because there's already concern about the impacts of the Freeway Sports Project already. That's why we made considerable improvements in the street up there to calm the traffic, to improve the look of the street. This will put more traffic up Fern Lane. The engineers will tell you, and an environmental review would tell you, the street can handle it, but it's really the concern by the residents that you'll hear from about additional traffic up and down their street, because, and I suspect two soccer fields, artificial turf, lights, restrooms, that's going to get a lot of play.
Yeah, would require an environmental review.
Well, we should maybe set aside something for some mitigation efforts, whether it's traffic, additional traffic calming, or noise attenuation, or landscaping, or something to mitigate, should this be the direction we go, to mitigate some of the impacts on that neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay.
Freeway Park Site C, you see we have no money there.
Right, and we looked at that, and that site really is limited in terms of what you can do. The sheer lane, which is a lot narrower than Fern Lane going up to the sports complex, goes through residential area, and you still have to cut through the road. It's a lot of work, but I think the access probably is the biggest issue there for the neighbors.
More potential land available, but in terms of cost-effectiveness and access, Freeway Site A is the preferred site, much easier to get access to, we already have access to it, much easier to develop.
Utilities are there.
Site C, nice location if you can get to it, but you can't get to it without the expenditure of tremendous dollars and avoiding sheer lane. Sheer lane is not good access at all.
And I think we also talked about, just to go back a little bit about Freeway Site A, we also talked about, potentially talking to Caltrans about an off-ramp there.
There is still the potential for an exchange there, a Freeway off-ramp.
To mitigate.
Northbound only, which would be the least costly. Again, none of that, in fact, and on and off ramps at Fern Lane doesn't meet Caltrans' policy standards at all, but if you could, if you could, through politics, get them to approve it, northbound is less costly than a full northbound, southbound, on and off ramp, and then you continue to have the issues of access on the Fern Lane. So if you were to close off Fern Lane, you need to have at least a northbound on and off ramp there on the freeway. And that is not provided for here.
Close off Fern Lane.
That was the Fern Lane residents' interest was in closing off Fern Lane, and even if you had the minimal northbound only on and off ramp, their desire was to close off Fern Lane. That requires that all access to and from the site come off the freeway. So if you're, if you're coming to the site, we'd always have to come to the site from the south, which means if you live in the north and want to access the site, you have to drive down to Mountain, get on the freeway and go north, and then if you live in the south to get to the site, you'd be coming from the south, but you have to go up to Verdugo and then come back down.
How about just a toll booth there at Fern? Recycle the money, funnel the money back into improvements on Fern. Anyway, I think we need some policy discussions on that, if that's.
Yeah, there's a lot more detail to come with that one. That takes us down to an item that'll probably take quite a bit of discussion, and that's Community Aquatics Center.
Right, and I think we are going to come back with another report to you from the consultant on an aquatics facility, but this one we plugged in anywhere between twenty-two to thirty-eight million, depending on whether or not there's property.
I am really, let me apologize first, because I'm really annoyed about something, and I want to, I want to talk about it. Wasn't prepared to, but I'm going to talk about it. It's been bothering me for a little while to some degree, but this morning, with the one little lecture that came, that for me is something I'm going to respond to, because I think now I have also heard enough. But I didn't, I asked the mayor whether this would be all right to take this time, because it's not related to you, George.
Can George sit down?
George, please.
Get out of the way, George.
Because he's going to feel like he's in the line of fire.
And this issue, but the point is, I didn't want to take up a lot of time, but maybe this is the time to do it. Mr. Milano, you know, I've considered you a great advocate in this city, a great public advocate in this city, and I still think that, but I'm at a point where I can't listen to this anymore, and here's why. You come up here and you talk about, you mix metaphors about need balancing it with what I call just absolute demagogery. You sit here and you talk about, if it isn't the way you see it, then it's not full transparency. If the decision-making doesn't go the way you like it, then it's not full disclosure, then the research isn't being done. I'm sorry, you are wrong, you're just wrong. And I'm saying that, not as a new council member, I'm saying that as a thirty-year public advocate in this city, much longer than you've been dealing with these issues and coming back and insisting that the city analyze the future needs of Glendale by plotting everything in specific moments of latitude and longitude on a graph, and then measuring them for accountability based on what? Based on your slide rule. And so let's talk about your slide rule. I've been making notes while you were speaking up here. That would be a disaster for this city, Mr. Milano, or any city, to do it that way. And you throw out words like "politics" as though that is some horrific, horrifying word. It's a balancing act, that's what politics is, and it's a very difficult one. Not agreeing with you, not coming to your analysis, not using your slide rule and your measure, does not make it non-transparent, it doesn't make it a conspiracy. And that's what I, that's the theme here. If it's not transparent according to your rule of measure, then something is being secreted here, something is being clouded here, the research isn't being done. How long would it take us to get through the CIP project if we did a PowerPoint on every sewer lateral in this city? You want to talk about political? We'd be sitting here being swamped with emails, letters, and phone calls from, frankly, citizens in this city that have a life, who want to know why we aren't getting on with the process. You've said to me privately, you know, this should be handled like we do in the private sector. Guess what? Here's part of the conspiracy. The public sector, this, this isn't the private sector. I know, I've worked as a representative of business almost my entire adult life. That works in a very different way. When I'm running my business, I can make unilateral decisions. I can say, this is what I want to do with my business, and you know what? If I screw it up, it's on me. I don't get to do that here. I can't do that here. I have to make certain assumptions here, I have to do research on my own here. So here's the answer to the conspiracy. Local government, and government in general, is unwieldy, it's messy, it has rough corners, but it doesn't mean it's a conspiracy, and it doesn't mean that we're not looking for provable answers, I'm sorry, to every nuance that you consider important. Yes, these are important concerns that you raise, but I'm sorry, I don't know any local government, I don't know any state government, I don't know any level of federal government that is able to analyze in a public forum like this every single nuance, and then throw in, and then throw in the added notion of just, you know, human, the actions that human beings take. I'm not talking about us, just the public, their needs as they express it to us. Let me come back to a couple things to illustrate that. You talk about Verdugo Park. Do you know, if you go back to the time and actually look at the history of how we acquired Verdugo Park, the city didn't want to do that. Where did it come from? Was it a, what, could it be justified at the time to spend the money for that? No, but we did. Yes, that was a political move, because the benefit seemed to be, in the long run, something worthwhile, even though we couldn't prove out the numbers at the time. What about Brand Park? Was it donated in portion? Yes. Have we spent a fortune there? Absolutely. At the time, the city was saying, well, should we do this? This is going to cost the city a fortune. Could that money be spent in other ways? That was a political decision, that the long-term benefit was better for the city. Chryscenta Valley Park, some years ago, not that distant in the past, it was offered to the city of Glendale free. And with that, we could have solved some problems with property for soccer fields, et cetera, but you know what the main issue was at the time? Maintenance. City didn't have the money at the time. So that was another, another example of how the city said, well, that money could be better spent on all the other parks. But according to your logic, we shouldn't have even considered taking on any expense at CV Park, even though it would have been offered to us free. Why? Because we don't need park space up in the north part of the city. It's not as simple as that, it just isn't. The political, you can't separate from the city, from municipal government, you can't take politics out of it. Politics is the thing that when we see that there is a need in a particular area, we try to satisfy it, even when the numbers don't necessarily show that that's the optimal place to spend those numbers on your scheme of latitude and longitude. So, in any case, and I have to say, I'm not asking for a response, I am not asking for a response. I'm happy to listen to you during your time here today, I think this is beyond the pale, I really do. To say that I am secreting something, that I am not operating in full disclosure, transparency, accountability, because I don't agree with you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Milano, I don't buy that. I'll be happy to hear anything you want to say to me during oral communications, but I don't want to hear anymore today.
Mr. Najarian, may I have sixty seconds to clarify a couple things?
Perhaps not, Mr. Milano. I would encourage you to take to heart some of the comments Mr. Draymond made. Certainly, your response, I know you will respond, but I don't think now is the appropriate time. You may do so either privately, or publicly, or through the media, or.
At six.
Or at six.
Or six.
I never used the word conspiracy, by the way. That never came out of my mouth.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I suspect we're going to conclude this morning.
Well, I would like to give, despite.
You don't have a quorum any longer.
You don't have a quorum, so it's essentially, you can't allow a speaker, but it won't be part of the quote-unquote official meeting.
Let me do this, our meeting therefore is, our study session is adjourned and we'll take up.
We'll start with the aquatic, Community Aquatics Center next Tuesday.
I do have a card, so off the record now, literally, I do have a card for Mr. Philpot, and Mr. Philpot, I know you've been waiting, I would invite you to address us informally, if you'd like to, or you're also invited, and I use the word "us," Ross.
I'm not going anywhere.
If you'd like to address us now, you're more than welcome. If not, we'll be here again next week.
I'll defer to next week, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we are adjourned.